Hello and welcome to the Real San Diego Podcast, where I interview inspiring and interesting people, dive into hot topics and communities around San Diego and more. I'm your host, C.C. Summerfield, and this week I'm talking to Corey Bruins, President of Ocean Beach Town Council. Corey is a young guy with some pretty big accomplishments under his belt, including bringing the longtime-running Ocean Beach Town Council online and presenting them with some fresh ideas. In this interview, we will get a deeper insight into the purpose of the Ocean Beach Town Council, what they do, and what the future holds for this community nonprofit. C.C. Summerfield, coming to you live from the OB Street Fair, and this is the official kickoff of my future podcast. And I'm starting out with Corey Bruins, the President of the OB Town Council, because I always want to know more about what's going on down there.
Awesome.
Corey, thanks for sharing your time with me here.
Yeah.
And yeah, before we get started on the OB Town Council, let me just ask you, what, where are you from? Who are you? Tell me a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, so I grew up in Vista, so North County kid. Moved to OB in 2015 on Super Bowl Sunday. I always remember that because nobody was available to help me move. They were all busy watching the game.
Game, yeah.
And yeah, I've been here since then. When I moved to OB, my intention was to, you know, I grew up in a neighborhood and as a kid, was really involved in everything going on in Vista. And then I needed to find another neighborhood to kind of plant my adult life in and get involved in. And so, yeah, OB was the contender for that.
That was so awesome.
Yeah, been around for about seven years. And yeah, I've been on the Town Council Board for six of those years.
You jumped right in then.
I did, yeah. I spent about a year in listening mode, just trying to kind of put the feelers out and pick up what the deal is in town. And there are so many incredible community groups doing
Oh, my gosh.
So much great work, as you know.
Yes, OB is just, I mean, they have so many great people that want to be involved in the community, and I just absolutely love it. I gotta take a side note, you said, "Super Bowl." I moved down here, seriously. I was here the weekend of the Super Bowl, visiting my sister, who lived in La Mesa at the time. And within a week, I decided I wanted to move down here. I mean, I, well, I didn't within a week. That weekend, I said, "You know what? I'm moving here, and if I'm gonna live here, I'm gonna live by the beach." And that's how I ended up in OB. Like, I found a place that weekend, and I seriously picked up and moved. Granted, I was 19-years-old, you know, so it was like, I could go wherever I wanted. I was like, "I'm done here. I'm, I'm out, Northern California." So yeah, I seriously picked up and moved in a week and moved here the week after the Super Bowl.
And the rest is history.
The rest is history. I've been here ever since.
Yeah.
So 20-plus years.
I feel like, that's amazing. I feel like OB is a town where you move and you find out really quick whether it's a place you want to stay.
Yes, for sure.
And then it's work.
Yeah, exactly.
It's work, but it's good work. And we have such a special community with a lot of people who really care about it.
Oh, totally, totally. So you got to volunteering in the community after you're kind of being around for about a year and kind of getting a feel for the community.
Yeah.
And what drew you to go to the OB Town Council is to get participating?
So really, it was like research mode for the first couple of months. I started putting a calendar together, it's like Town Council. And I grew up in Vista, right where, you know, Vista is a city. And so, there's not really, I mean, there's neighborhoods, but we don't really have organizations within the neighborhoods that are like a Town Council. So I was new to even the concept of this. Kind of started out with, wait, is, I thought OB was a part of San Diego. We have a council. What does that mean? So yeah, I was kind of nervous and felt like the new kid on the block and showed up at the Masonic Lodge on Sunset Cliffs for a meeting. And walked in and sat down. It felt a lot like the TV show Park and Rec. But in, in a good, fun way, where I was like, "This is cool. This is real life. There are people who care about things that are going on in this zip code."
Yeah.
And attended a couple of more meetings. And then my very first event was the Pier Pancake Breakfast.
I remember that. I was there.
Yeah, 2016 Pier Pancake Breakfast. And it was a couple of months after that that I joined the board.
Really got involved.
Yeah, and I feel like as soon as you find the layer of people in this community who care about what's going on here, your world just expands.
Oh, yeah.
You know everybody right away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you're immediately put to work.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because you can't never get enough volunteers. And I gotta say, I remember that Pier Pancake Breakfast. And I was like, "Who's this Corey kid coming in?" And I, I mean, they have to have been very welcoming for your energy and the hard work, hard work that you put forward. Because seriously, I mean, you took it to another level with that Pier Pancake Breakfast. You got them online.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I remember is like, "Oh, OB Town Council? They, they're online now? Wow."
Online tickets, I know.
Oh, that was a game changer.
It was a major deal.
That was a game changer, though, because, I mean, you know, there's a lot of older people that are involved, and they, they've done great work. But having some young energy come in and really balance that out, I mean, had to been a game changer for them.
Totally.
Yeah.
Well, and it's been, you bring up kind of a great point, which is this turning point that we're at as a community, where we're needing to consider all of our incredibly deep and important history and legacy, which goes back a long ways in this community. I think the current iteration really came to form in the 60s.
Funky little beach town.
I mean, as you look around, you can kind of see the, the elements of that still. And we're now in this phase where we need to figure out, what of the, that legacy, what of that are we carrying forward?
Sure, kind of re-identifying, yeah. It's kind of re-identification.
But it's important, as you, as you bring up, you know, even little things like putting tickets online, which might seem so simple.
Yes.
We get some pushback on that, and that's fair.
Sure.
Because we're creatures of habit, and we like things the way that we like them. And we often like them the way that they've always been.
Exactly. I get that.
I understand it. I totally do. And I think that that's like the big picture story of the season we're in as an organization. We've been around for 60 years. Our former president, Gretchen Newsom, walking down the street.
Hi, Gretchen. She didn't see us, but we see her.
And as we turn this corner, that's, that's really the story of the future of the council right now. And it's kind of a listening process in and of itself, right? Kind of picking up from the community. I talk to so many people and do my best to listen in terms of, you know, what are the things about OB that matter most to you?
To you, yeah.
Yeah, what, what about the history? Especially people who have lived here a lot longer than I have. What about the history?
Yes, what do you want, what elements you want to keep?
And what elements are not serving us any longer?
Exactly, yeah.
There's both.
There's definitely both. And we're all, we both know about what's going on in OB. We're, we're in a kind of a changing world here.
Yeah.
So you do, you work also. You have your own business.
Yes.
And how does that translate into, yeah, a couple of businesses? How does that translate? And how, what do you do, first off? And how does that translate to the work that you do with OB Town Council?
Yeah, so kind of the two main cores of work, work that I have. I work with nonprofits around the country on designing experiences and gatherings. So trade shows, conferences, events, lots of virtual events the past couple of years.
Sure.
And that really intersects with my work on the council, since we have so many events and we are a nonprofit.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, as a lot of folks know, back at kind of the end of 2020, I started a grain bowl business.
That's right.
And we transitioned to being fully wholesale, so you can find our grain bowls in coffee shops and things like that around town, which is obviously a totally different world than events and business and things like that. But super fun. And how that all intersects with, you know, my work on the council, I have to say, it's, it's a labor of love. It's a big job.
It is, for sure.
Especially kind of coming up to the, the presidency about a year ago now. Seriously, just so much behind-the-scenes work that most folks don't have any clue what's going on.
There's a lot that goes into it. And you are volunteering, by the way, on this. So I mean, it's really amazing that, that that can intersect with what you already do and that you can serve us as a community. So tell me a little bit more about how the Ocean Beach Town Council got started? You said it was 60 or something years old?
Yep, yep.
What, what got it started?
Good question. As with many organizations, and really any organization that's decades old, the story is checkered. I wouldn't say that I'm proud of a lot of moments in our history. One of the things that I did before I joined the board, and I do this with everything, is I kind of like deep dive from like a research perspective.
Sure.
And I have a subscription to be able to look at the San Diego Union Tribune all the way back from like its inception. And I just searched Ocean Beach Town Council, and I read every article. There's dozens. And it is, it's, it's super fascinating. So some of the things that are popping up in my head are some of the first meetings were held on the other side of the hill. And really, the council came to be because, and it's so interesting because it feels like not much has changed. But the council came to be because OBsians felt like they weren't being well-represented at the city.
Got it.
And that we were the forgotten neighborhood of San Diego.
Yeah.
And we still feel that way.
I think there's still that element of that feeling, like, "Why, we don't get our voices heard." Although we have been heard more recently on some of the issues. I feel like our voice has gotten louder. We've got a lot of representation down at the city when there is things that are affecting our, our town here.
100%, and it's all communication, man. So yeah, that's, that's the inception of the council, is some folks got together. Ned Tietlow is the name of the first president.
I remember that, yeah.
Some folks got together. And the inception of the Main Street Association happened around the same time.
Sure.
So OB really started to organize in the late 60s, early 70s, and go, "You know what? We're gonna have our own identity."
Right.
"And we're a part of the city of San Diego, so we need to make sure that we're organized, that we're communicating, that we have solidified opinions."
Yes.
So that's how the council began. So it really started as an advocacy group to advocate on behalf of OBsians to the city, the county, the state. Yeah, the residents, yes. As time went on, all of these really great events, kind of grassroots events, like the parade, like the street fair, all of these amazing, the Pier Pancake Breakfast, all the things we do in the holidays started to spring up, and they needed to find a home. So handful of events found a home with the Main Street Association, and a handful of events found a home with the Town Council.
Sure.
And today, a huge portion of the work that we do is producing this set of events for the community. And yeah, so it's, it's the Pier Pancake Breakfast, the Restaurant Walk, all of the things that happen during the holidays. We put the tree down. A lot of folks in OB feel like the tree just magically appears.
Yeah, where do you pick that tree?
I wish I had a button that did that, where you could just say, "Oh, the tree is in perfect." No, so many logistics. And as you said, all volunteers are making it happen. So that's how the council started. It's been all volunteer-led, all volunteer-run since its inception. And yeah, we're proud to continue that today. And kind of the next season of, of that is looking at, we just launched four new committees, or reorganized our committees, I guess, clarified them into four groups, events, improvement, advocacy, and engagement. And right this moment, actually, we are recruiting for committee members to join these committees.
Okay.
In the past, I think I've heard from a lot of people who are like, "Oh, man, I would love to get involved." But joining the board is just a big commitment.
Yeah.
You know how that is.
Oh, yeah, I'm on a board too.
You're on Main Street, yeah. So joining a board is just a huge commitment. And I totally understand that. I mean, when we're all volunteers, right? We have to be gracious with each other in what we expect, I think, of each other's time, because we all have to survive and make enough money to live in our beach town, too.
It's not exactly cheap to live here.
It's not cheap to live here at all. But we have so many people in this community who care.
Yes, we do.
And so, if we can give them kind of a lower-level access, a lower commitment, I mean, in the form of a committee, other ways to get involved and volunteer, that I think we can spread the workload out a little bit and have an even greater impact.
I think so, too.
So that's what we're working on right now.
Okay, so where, which committees in particular do you need more help with? And tell me a little bit about the committees that are, that you have just spread into.
Totally. So we'll start with events. That's the big beast. So we've got about 10 events of various sizes. The parade is obviously a huge event.
So when you talk about the parade, we're talking about the Ocean Beach Holiday Parade?
Yes.
We don't call it the Christmas Parade anymore.
I know.
Whatever.
Yes, yes, we are talking about the Holiday Parade. So the Holiday Parade's a huge event. We always see so many folks for that. And then on down, Pier Pancake Breakfast, all those events. So on our Events Committee, that's gonna be comprised of folks who are chairing these events. A major change that we're, we're moving toward, historically, we've had it so that all of our events are chaired by members of the board.
Yeah.
I have a feeling that there are, what's up, Carter? I have a feeling that there are lots of folks in this community who have a little bit of an event planning skill in their pocket. Doesn't, you don't need to be a professional or anything, but like a little bit of an event planning skill, who are like, "I can't join a board. I can't do this whole big thing."
I don't have the time.
"But I might help you out with one event."
Yeah, sure.
"Maybe I can help you run the Pancake Breakfast." Whatever your favorite event is, one that you've been going to forever, whatever it might be. So that's a new thing, is we're looking for folks in the community who would say, "Hey, yeah, I've been going to the Pancake Breakfast every year. I'd love to help run it."
Yeah.
And that can be the one thing you do.
Yeah.
And then you'll join the Events Committee and be supported by, you know, all of this, this team of folks. So that's what's going on in events.
Yeah.
Engagement is kind of this work here, really making what's going on in OB, what's going on in the council, and our sister organizations known to more OBsians.
Sure.
Right? In our world, we've got 27,000 to 30,000 people who live in 92107. And it's like the same 150 people that we see all the time, right?
We're approaching like 1%, like not even that.
Exactly. So our engagement group, if you've got ideas on how to spread the word about what's going on in OB, and we'd love to share the love, not just us, but Main Street. We're working together all the time. That's what's going on in our Engagement Committee.
Yeah.
Improvement is really the physical space. So we work, we've kind of adopted the Garden OBE over the course of COVID, take care of the garden. Many years ago, the Town Council put the Ocean Beach sign in at the entrance, coming off of SeaWorld Drive. So we need some folks to help maintain that. And there are probably more improvement projects that we can do. So we're looking to identify some core improvement projects in the community, and then also continue to work on a strategic plan, kind of in coordination with a Clean and Safe Committee on how we can keep OB beautiful. It's an ongoing issue.
Exactly, of course.
And, and we want to be a part of that conversation in a meaningful way. So that's what's going on, on the Improvement Committee. And lastly, with advocacy. So this is where folks that really dig into what's going on at the city, county, state, federal level, who want to have a voice and want to help craft what things we pick to engage in.
Yes.
Because we don't have space to get involved in every single thing.
Yes.
But there are a lot of things that matter to OBsians. Obviously, recently, passed short-term vacation rental ordinance, passed a vendor ordinance. Some of our big things are starting to come to fruition.
Thank goodness, it's been years.
It's been a very long time.
It's been a very long time coming.
Long time coming.
Yes.
I know folks have various opinions on that.
Yep.
All is reasonable. I think we're just happy that we've crossed the line, and there is something on the books.
Yes, yes.
So our Advocacy Committee will be looking toward, you know, the next five to 10 years. What are things that are impacting OBsians? And ways that we can work with our local elected officials to ensure that OB has a voice
Exactly.
in what those ordinance is going to be.
A solidarity voice, too.
So advocacy is a great place for that.
Yeah.
And my last comment on that is, another thing that I hear from folks all the time about Town Council is, "Well, I want to get involved, but I only really like the events." "I want to get involved, but I don't want to go to any event ever, but I do care about what's going on with short-term vacation rentals, and I want to spend all my time advocating for the community."
Sure.
Now we've got space for that. Come join the community that you find passion in, and you can spend time just in that world.
Yeah.
So kind of spreading it out.
I think that's a great idea, because people are only gonna work what they're, volunteer in what they're passionate about. So I think that's really a good turn for the OB Town Council is to put those very specific things in place so that it doesn't get people like overwhelmed in the the hugeness of it all, right?
Yes, focus.
Focus.
You know, focus is your superpower.
I know. That's what I have in my office, because I need reminders.
Yes, no, it's true.
All right, so what is the accomplishment that you're most proud of? Is it the committees that you've built? Or is there another accomplishment during your time as the president that you are most proud of at OBTC?
Oh, great question. This is, this is a real specific answer, but it's something that hadn't been done in the six years I had been on the board. We got almost 14 out of 15 of our board members. And the one who couldn't make it couldn't make it because COVID sucked. But we got almost our entire board together for an entire day.
Oh, wow.
To, I know, on a weekend to...
They came out on a weekend to volunteer?
And we met not in OB. We got outside the bubble
Okay.
to get some perspective.
Yeah.
So a little bit of a team offsite.
Okay.
And I am so proud of our team for doing it and going through that mission vision work. Some of that Start With Y stuff. What's going on with the Town, with the council, you know? It's time to assess, look at, look at where we've been. Look at where we are.
Yes.
Figure out where we're trying to go.
Yeah.
And organize it in a way that's impactful, that's helpful, that's life-giving for us and for the community.
Yeah.
And so I was just so stoked to see everyone spend an entire day, and that's a big commitment on a weekend.
That is a big commitment, yeah.
Big commitment. They're already going to a couple of meetings a month, you know?
It goes to show you how much people care here. There's so much passion and so much heart in this community. It's just unbelievable, especially for those that volunteer at that level, too.
Yes.
So.
So we had a great day, just looking at everything that is OB Town Council. And these committees are a result of that. So we were able to spend our, I mean, the Post-its were all over the walls. We're brainstorming, figuring out what's important, boiling it down. That's how we kind of got these four committees.
Yeah, that's what comes to mind.
I feel like that's a huge accomplishment, because it was literally, you've tried to schedule meetings before online with large groups of people. Even with one or two, it's sometimes impossible.
Yes.
So we sat in our, our board meeting one month, and I said, "I'm gonna say dates. Raise your hand if you're available." And we're, we're gonna sit here until we find the one where we're all free, and we're gonna make it happen.
Yes.
So I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of our team for doing it.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I love it. And that's how this whole committee, the committees came about. And I love that you guys got together. I had a similar experience with that. When I was on the, the PTA over at OB Elementary, my kids back there, I had a really good friend, her name is Karen Coats, and she was just an amazing organizer. It was her and a couple of other parents that were just very inspiring, similar to what your style is. I mean, I know you from other places. So we've sat together, we've talked, we've talked about all about why and that kind of stuff. And we went through a similar kind of committee, a meeting like that, where we, we picked out what was important to us. And then we came up with like four committees that were our main committees that drilled down on the subjects that were important of the school. And I, I think they still exist at OB Elementary. And this is, you know, my kids are basically out of high school at this point. So it was amazing. It was an amazing group of parents, and I can't say enough good things about that school.
Well, that's, and that's a part of your legacy, right? Is kind of doing the work to build the container that it can exist when you're gone.
Exactly. And that's what we did. And it was, I'm so, so inspired.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know it was happening back then. I was just like, "Wow, these are all great ideas. Let's get this going." And then it came together, and I mean, none of my doing. I just sat there and was like, "This is so cool. I'm glad you guys came up with these ideas." But amazing people, like you said, in this community that come together and do this kind of work, so.
That's awesome. It's hard, as you know, sometimes to get, especially when you're in a volunteer world where it's, it's event to event, meeting to meeting, and you're really, it's working on the business and in the business, right? So in the vol, I mean, it's already hard enough when you're, when you're doing it to get paid.
Yeah.
When you're doing it in the volunteer world, taking time to get some altitude.
Yes.
Come up to 30,000 feet for more than just a couple of seconds and really think at the vision level.
Yes.
Where are we gonna go? That's creating an asset for the future of the organization, right?
It is, yeah.
And, and I mean, every business needs that. We need to do that with our life sometimes, as you know.
Seriously, and then to step back.
Get off the hamster wheel.
Yes, look at it, take a step back, yeah.
Is this the hamster wheel that I want to be running on? Or would I like to redesign it a little bit?
Right, time to redesign. That's kind of what I'm out here doing now, is like getting out into the community again now that we're kind of out of the space of COVID, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
Trying to be more in-person again and, you know, really talking to the community and seeing what, seeing what's going on. So I'm super excited about this new little adventure.
Yeah, I'm excited for you.
And I'm so happy that you joined me today.
It's great.
So I know we talked a little bit about the challenges. So I know we talked a little bit about the challenges. What do you think the biggest challenge OB Town Council has right now, is facing right now? And how are you kind of thinking about managing that?
That's a great question. The, the first thing that comes to mind is, and it's, it's real meta. Um, is that it's really easy for people to rally around something that they're against. It is incredibly difficult to rally people around something that they're for.
That's an interesting thing, I mean, you said it, yeah.
We see it happen in this community and communities around the world over and over and over again. The second that something's about to happen in this community that we're against.
Yeah.
Boom, we all show up, contend for the town, advocate, targets coming in. I mean, we've, we've had the most packed meeting ever in my history.
Yes.
In that hall.
Yeah.
You know, when, when something's happening in this community that this, the zeitgeist, the general feeling is we're not about that. And I think a big challenge for us over the next number of years is going to be solidifying the identity of what we're about. And I think that when we ask the question, you know, what does it mean to be an Obetian? And in the beginning of pandemic, I did a little podcast project on that and got some really interesting answers. And kind of the general idea was, you can be, that Obetian is a mindset. It's not just necessarily you've got your feet on the ground here in OB.
Yeah.
Um, but it's a way of life. It's a way of thinking. And it's something that really came to form in, in culture in this town in the sixties and seventies.
Yes.
And so what I'm wondering is, how do we take that mindset and create a center point where, when we've got conflict in this community, when we've got issues, when we have decisions to make, we can kind of come up a little bit from the, this is what you think, this is what I think.
And we're not, we're divided.
What's good for us?
What's good for the whole?
What's good for us?
Yeah.
You know, and that requires us to lay a little bit down of what we might want personally.
Yeah.
Um, compromise.
Compromise, exactly.
You know, we're in one big relationship here.
Exactly.
And so.
Love thy neighbor.
Love thy neighbor. And, and so how do we create some center points to say, you know, this is what it means to be an Obetian in a way where we, a, a lot of us could agree about it.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's something I'm thinking a lot about is, uh, you know, what does that mean? And that's, it's a big project. It's a heady idea. It's, it's, it's super meta. Um, and it's just gonna be lots and lots and lots of conversations, I think.
Definitely.
And listening, responding, hearing, uh.
Definitely.
And holding space for us to kind of transition into a world where we can come together around those things. And kind of to your point, I think the energy right now is, that's like the season we're in.
Mm-hmm, we are.
As we're coming out, just collecting, I don't know. It just feels like it's in the air.
It is.
Where it's time to come together.
Yeah.
And, you know, come out of our cocoons of COVID.
I think it's also, people are tired of the division.
Yeah.
And ready to maybe start unifying, maybe compromising a little bit on such strong opinions and maybe realizing that it's okay to be friends with your neighbor, even if you don't have all the same opinions on something.
Hundred percent.
I mean, we were there at one time and then we went way like crazy over the other side where everything, because people were fearful. I mean, they were fearful of getting sick and they were fearful of, of, um,
Yeah.
the thoughts that people had. I mean, COVID was very dividing, obviously. And we don't need to go all diving into that, but.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, we're coming out of it. We're most, you know, for the most part, healthy and everybody's doing okay.
Yeah.
So it's time to start really getting back that sense of community.
Hundred percent.
You know?
I'm excited about the peers.
Yes, me too. I will have somebody coming on to talk about that next week. They weren't able to make it today, but.
Awesome.
I'm super excited to talk about the peer and what's gonna be happening down there.
Yeah. And I think that that's going to be maybe a physical representation of coming together.
Community and yes, coming together.
Something that is, I mean, it's, there's obviously political elements of it, but something that is mostly apolitical.
Yes.
That we can say, you know, we're proud of this. This is something that's very OB. It has been very OB for a very long, since nineteen sixty-six, when it's built, it's iconic.
It's iconic.
And so I'm really hoping that that's something we can continue to come together around as a community, see through what our differences might be and kind of collectively look west towards the beautiful asset of the ocean.
Yeah.
And, you know, stack hands and start to agree on some ways that we want to be inhabiting the waterfront for the next fifty years.
Yes, exactly.
I think it's gonna be a cool, cool way to do that.
I definitely think so too. So are you guys back to live meetings? Are you doing still online?
Yes. So we just had our second live meeting at the Masonic. We're doing hybrid. Um, as you know, it's, it's, we've learned a lot of positive things from COVID. And I think one of those is we had more engagement in our online meetings.
Okay.
Collectively than we ever did in person.
Yeah.
I think the accessibility was just huge for people.
I think it is too, because it's a nighttime meeting. So.
Yes.
For me, I, I'm guilty. I'm, I'd prefer to just attend it online so I can listen in. I don't necessarily need to be there for every meeting and to have a say in something.
Hundred percent.
And to take the time out to actually go to the Masonic Center. Um, I have, obviously, I've had other meetings for years that I go to too. And so it was just one more meeting and it was right during like dinnertime and I was like, sorry, guys.
No, I totally get it.
You know you can put me up for anything to volunteer for.
I know.